Yeah, man, AJ.
You young kids don't know.
Do I have to wait for you? So girl, I can't move on. Oh, baby, tell me how long? Do I have to wait for you, honey? So I can say that you're gone. Wouldn't you like to know? I'm in a hopeful state, baby. You said to love the soul, but I just don't know how long I can wait. Oh, baby, tell me how long? Do I have to wait for you, honey? So girl, I can't move on. Baby, how long? Do I have to wait for you, honey? So I can say that you're gone. How long? Do I have to wait for you, honey? So girl, I can't move on. Do I have to wait for you, honey?
All right. Hey, folks. Can everybody hear me? We good? All right. Um, welcome to another special session of AJ Special Session, I suppose. So we'd say with Dr. Scott, we're very, very lucky to have Dr. Scott back in the building with us, or I guess in the weird Zoom room situation, which kind of works out since Dr. Scott is on the East Coast. It would kind of be hard to do this in person with her timeframe. But today's session, we're going to be talking about sports and activism. And like last time, quick house rules. First and foremost, this is a knowledge shaming free zone. There is no such thing as a stupid question. You can just ask a question in a way that is offensive to people, and we will gladly redirect that question so it's less offensive to people. Second of all, you are in the midst of a whole historian, so please, as you have. I mean, like a whole, like we have like a history undergrad, history masters, histories PhD. So it's like a, it's like a whole historian. So feel free to ask questions in the chat, and we will get to them as we are able. And that's, that's, those are pretty much the rules. Don't be a jerk and ask questions. Um, so to get started, I will be asking Dr. Scott some questions. Just this is a conversational piece. We're not going into breakout groups. Don't feel like, you know, you need to be stressed. As always, if you need to, you can, on your top right hand corner, put it to speaker view so that the person who's talking, it's a little easier, so you don't feel like you have to bounce around. And if you feel comfortable, you know, pop up in your video so we can see the folks who are actually in this space. But again, no pressure if you don't feel like it. Um, all right, so first question that I have for Dr. Scott, first of all, hi, Dr. Scott. Nice to see you.
Hi, how are you? It's so great to be back. How are you doing, AJ? And it's lovely to see familiar faces and new faces. So thank you for having me back to have this conversation about sports and activism.
You know, one of the things that I feel like folks need to realize is your kind of area of expertise is not just around like lynching and leisure, but also you're pretty damn knowledgeable when it comes to, when it comes to sports. Um, so one of the first questions I have, if we are to start in the early days of a young Dr. Scott, um, you happen to tell me a story about a softball dream. Yeah, we're gonna start, we're gonna start right off.
I'm just gonna jump right into that one.
Um, so you are an athlete, your kids are athletes, your husband is an athlete. So it's like you built a mini family of athletes. But, uh, in your younger days, what happened at the softball game? So basically, what I want you guys to understand is who Dr. Scott is and who Dr. Scott isn't. And what she isn't is one to be played with, and that was from the very beginning. So if you wouldn't mind sharing, could you kind of give us an idea of what young Dr. Scott was like?
You're gonna dismantle some level of sophistication that I'd like to project.
I'm showing humanity. I'm showing.
That's okay. I like it. I like it. And can I put, can I put out there first, again, thank you for being here. AJ and I know each other because we both participated in Project Pilgrimage. And so I absolutely adore AJ and all of the work that she is doing. She too has expertise in various areas, and I applaud her for that, and I think it's wonderful. And I want everybody to check out Common Power, the organization that is sponsoring this. And maybe later we can talk about some of the things they do. So maybe I'm just trying to detract from before we get into our conversation of sports and activism. What happened? I played softball in eighth grade, and we won the game, and this was in Phoenix. And as I was walking away from a field, a young girl from the opposing team who lost decided to yell out the N word at me. And I was the only black child on the team, so it was clearly directed at me. And so, um, yeah, I reacted in a way that was, you know, physical. We'll just say that. And would I advise my kids to do the same? You know, we're in a different world right now. I'm 46. That was a number of years ago. I can't say I'd advise them to do the same, but there was something that my parents had always told me. And we grew up outside the suburbs of Chicago. They were rather racist. And they said, if somebody calls you that, you know, make sure they only call you that once. And so for me, it was very empowering. And so it didn't lead to any level of nihilism. It led to a level of me saying, that's, I'm proud of who I am, and you're not going to say that to me. What the story reflects, and I think this is what you're bringing up, is that sports become this contest that is more than entertainment. And so the anger that she had in her loss prompted her not just to sit with that and to say, well, I lost, and I'll get up and go something, do better next time. She wanted to take it out specifically on me as the black child on that team. And so I think that's kind of a pattern that we have seen historically when we think about the intersection of race and sports. And it's something I think that has gotten better, but they are much, much better, no question. There are moments of that that still rear their head.
Yeah, yeah. Basically, I want y'all to understand Dr. Scott's not the one to be played with. Right. With, with all the sophistication that, you know, we as black women sometimes have to hold ourselves to, it doesn't mean that we won't get messy for the right one, and that girl was the right one. Um, but one of the other questions I have in kind of talking about, but we're gonna try and keep it together today, but it is Friday, and we got an election in eleven days, and I.
AJ and I have fun when we talk.
Always, as, as should difficult conversations around history. Um, there should be some love to it, but also for black folks, sometimes that is a trauma response. So understand that sometimes laughter is more of a trauma response and a collective experience more than anything else, but also I just really like Dr. Scott. Um, so was that you interested in sports and activism? And what does it mean to be an activist kind of in your worldview?
So, well, those are great questions. So I think what got me interested in sports in general, and you hit the nose on the hip, and you said that, that I used to be a former athlete, and I coached for a number of years. I actually just stopped coaching last year. I grew up in a family with sports. Both of my brothers played football in college. One of them played for many years in the NFL. So ever since I was five years old, I was taken to games all over the country. My husband played football in college. My daughters are running track in college now. So I always had that interest. My brother, who was 11 years older than me, and much like a father figure, passed away about 12 years ago. And when he died, he was only 45 years old. When he died, that's the one who played in the NFL, I really started to be interested in sports beyond playing them, but more of in an intellectual level and began to research them. And I have since then kind of reflected on that and thinking about, it was a way for me to be able to connect to him and to stay kind of close to him. And so I've carried that on. When I started to think about the interaction or the intersection of sports and activism, and particularly as, you know, race is kind of factored into that, that's when I started teaching courses on civil rights and black power many years ago. And that's when I started to really recognize and understand the role that athletes have historically had in the advance, in the advancement for racial and social justice. So when you ask, what is activism? I love that question because what I always encourage people to do is move beyond a conventional notion of what it means to be an activist. Sometimes when we think activist, we think, okay, well, you must be marching. You must be organizing a march. But it is so much broader than that. And it's important to understand that it's broader than that, both historically and today, so that we don't shy away from it, and so that we understand each of us has the power to affect change in different ways as an activist. So what does it mean then when we think about activism within the context of sports? Much of that has to do with the timeframe. For instance, at an earlier portion, earlier days in sports, the idea that African Americans could be a quarterback or could play five on a team basketball seemed asinine in the country because the racist trope said that you are not intelligent enough to do that. So when I ask people, for instance, who was the first black quarterback to win the Super Bowl? Most people, or a lot of people who were into football, know it was Doug Williams. When I say who was the second, you guys might know a lot of the Seattle based people, but most people don't know, but it was Russell Wilson. I love that a lot of people don't know, because when they don't know, it demonstrates a level of progress that we have made. But the point I'm making is that the ability to demonstrate, hey, we are a people who can do this, that was a level of activism, simply being able to play quarterback. Or when African Americans were excluded from Major League Baseball and created their own institutions, the creation of those institutions, that too was activism. And so we have to think very broadly about what it means. At its baseline, activism is the ability to affect change. How are you going to do that? That depends on where you are, who you are, what you have at your disposal, and how you want to do it.
Folks, that is why Dr. Scott's classes always have wait lists. Um, so a follow up question to that is, is there an obligation for black athletes in particular to use their fame to highlight the plight of black folk? Like, do you have to be an activist if you are a LeBron James or a Jack Johnson or whoever else?
Oh, Jack Johnson, I love. I hope we get to talk about Jack Johnson because he's.
Oh, we sure will.
Okay, good. So I'm very careful in that because I think historically, there has been a charge leveled both ways. That if you are an athlete, you should not be an activist, that you should be a body that is made one for entertainment and not one that, as I talked about in my article, that adheres to your authentic self. And that obviously is asinine. But then there's the other charge that you don't, we don't want to impose on people this idea of what they're supposed to do, because you always have to understand what's happening in somebody's personal life. Perhaps they're dealing with their own issues at home or anxiety issues or something. So we don't want to say you must do this, but what we can do is applaud the ones who do rather than admonish them. And so the idea to say that you must only be this on the court, on the gridiron, on the track, and you must be nothing else is horrific to me. And if we had allowed people to adhere to that, many of the changes that we've made in society would not have come to pass. But when we see somebody like LeBron James, who is opening a school and sending kids to school, to elementary or to high school and college for free, then we need to applaud that. Because what that does is brings other people into the fold of saying, well, what can I do with my platform? Or other athletes who have pushed, for instance, the NFL or the NBA to open up their spaces, their stadiums and their colosseums for polling places. That's wonderful. If you have a platform, I have always encouraged students to use that, whether they are student athletes in my courses or not. I believe firmly that we each should somehow use whatever platform we have to make this world better than when we, better while we are here than when we first arrived. And that's exactly what we teach our children to.
I think that's the truth. I mean, I'm pretty sure my mom was a former spy, so I'm obligated to do, to do right by threat of death. So, uh, nah, she never played. She's like, I gave you these gifts. I brought you into this world not to stay. Um, which actually, I, I'm okay with that, right? Like, I think there's this idea that like to be an activist, you have to have, you know, thousands and thousands of followers, or there have to be these really grand gestures, but it also can be in the small singular interactions that you have, you have with people. But, um, so we're gonna pivot a little bit. Just wanted to give you guys kind of a baseline of the thoughts that make up Dr. Scott. But as you can see, I am wearing a Ken Griffey Jr. t-shirt that was actually designed by a kid that I used to mentor at the Ring of Honor Boys and Girls Club. So one, I get to shout out Kai, and two, also, you helped edit a book, now write a book that is around Seattle sports and activism. So could we, could we spend a little bit of time talking about your book? Um, if for anyone who is curious, Dr. Scott's book is also linked on the website under the events page. So please feel free to definitely get that book. Um, so your book is called Clay, Identity, and the Pursuit in the Emerald City. What, what was your book about? And like, what was the goal in the creation of the book? And the importance in telling the stories that are in the book? And particularly yours with Mr. Lenny Wilkins?
Mr. Lenny Wilkins, yes, I always love using that name of the crowd. It largely comes from Seattle because everyone automatically, he is, so that's fun. So the book itself, Seattle Sports, as you mentioned, is part of a larger series about sport culture and identity from the University of Arkansas. So they have many award winning series, many book series in that where some of the books are just like this one. They focus on urban centers. So there's a DC sports, New York sports, Baltimore, and then others as well. And so I am the editor for that as well as a contributor. And what those books seek to do is to uncover the histories in those cities. Now, the series editor left it to the editor to determine what you wanted. Well, I lived in Seattle for a number of years. For those of you who are not familiar with, I taught at the University of Washington, lived in Seattle for 10 years before moving here to Maryland. And so I understood and became very aware of, while I was there, not only the importance of sports to Seattleites, because sometimes people push Seattle aside and say, oh, it's Starbucks, it's Microsoft, it's this, it's not sports. The importance, the centrality of sports historically to Seattleites, but also the diversity of it. And so it was very important for me to make sure that the contributors in that book highlighted the diverse histories. So I'm proud to say that of the 10, of the 10 contributors, seven are women, for instance. And you don't often see that when people are writing about sports. Uh, almost half of us are people of color. And so even within the context of the writers, it is a diverse group. And we're talking about Japanese Americans in the interwar years, the centrality of softball to the LGBTQ plus community in the 1980s, and how it was used as a form of political activism. Um, I write a chapter, as you mentioned, on Lenny Wilkins, the great Lenny Wilkins, who, and we can talk, I think we'll talk a little bit more about him in a bit, but about the 1979 Supersonics Championship and about his life as well. There's a chapter about the Seattle Seahawks and their activism historically. And so that was really important to me. There's a chapter about hockey and how Native Americans and then women were involved in hockey in the city of Seattle before anyone else was. So the book really is about a diverse history of Seattle, and it makes the argument that Seattle should be placed on the same level as a great sporting city, just like New York and Chicago, Los Angeles and Philadelphia.
I fully agree. As a graduate of B. Garfield High School, you know, not Franklin, as my best friend Julian went to Franklin, no, you, you, with their drug, Garfield all day. Um, Garfield and Franklin had a really awesome rivalry. And also, there are a lot of great basketball players and sports players that have come out of Washington. Nice Janet, I see you. Go Bulldogs. Um, and so one of the things that I know that I was a part of was when Garfield went on a really big run for their women's basketball team, and we were undefeated, I believe. It was, woo, Metal Brook, Metal Brook beat us. The freshman hit a three pointer from the corner. Nobody was guarding her, and we, we lost our streak. But we won, we won state that year. Um, and we had people like, um, you know, we had a girl named Malia O'Neal, who was brilliant, and she had her Jordan flu game against Breanna January, who now is in the WNBA. Um, and all these other folks to come out of, to come out of Washington. But, um, you, again, you mentioned, uh, Lenny Wilkins. So how did you, how do you even like get in touch with Lenny Wilkins? Like, is this, I mean, people don't use Yellow Pages anymore. So how does, how does that work? How did you get in touch with Lenny Wilkins, and how did the story kind of unfold?
You know, I'm gonna use this, and I, I, people have asked me how I got in touch with Lenny Wilkins, and I'll tell you kind of the, the part of it that I tell people. But it's making me think about, since I was talking about my brother earlier, a life lesson that he taught me that I would love to share with people. So my brother, before he passed, he, like I said, he played in the NFL. He also owned a business. He was an actor as well. And he never waited for anything. He never went to standard cold calls. He was on, and some of you will remember, a show back in the day called Different World. You know, he got on Different World, he sent flowers and contacted the producers straight and continued, and then got on the show. And that, him doing that, made me always say, let me just go straight to the source. And I've done that with a number of things. It's really become kind of a guiding principle in my life. And so in thinking about Lenny Wilkins, how did I get in touch with him? I had a number of people who came to talk at my class on the history of sports and African Americans at UW, and I wanted them to be there to serve as examples for the, for the students who were in the class. And to say, if they can go through the things that they went, and this is one of the lessons we learned from sports history, if people can persevere through the things and the challenges they had, we can do anything. Nothing should stop us. We should remember that when we find our moments of challenge. So I called his foundation, as I did with a number of other people, and said, will you come speak in my class? Just go straight to it. And to his credit, because this is a man who has a very high speaker fee. He speaks all over the country. He wanted to make sure that young people at, in Seattle knew his story. He came to speak at my, to my class many times, never, never asked for a penny. When we wanted to pay him, he wouldn't take it, free every single time. He's that kind of a person. He just wanted to make sure they understood his story. And so it was when he started to talk about, when we talk about sports and activism, beyond the Dream Team, beyond the 1979 Supersonics win, and how, this is a man who, for many of you who may not know, is in the Naismith Hall of Fame three times as a player, a coach, and then as a coach for the Dream Team. He started to talk about some of his civil rights activism, and he didn't frame it in that way. He didn't say I was a civil rights activist, but he talked about how he threatened to boycott the 1963 All-Star Game if they did not give players a pension, he and a few other players. And guess what? Players have a pension today because of that. That's activism. He also talked about how he did the same to make sure coaches got a pension. He once left a game with a few other teammates on his team and the opposing team, including the great Bill Russell, because they refused in West Virginia to seat African American players. And so, and I know you didn't ask about his activism yet, but that is one of the things he started talking about in the class, and he started to reveal these stories about he, how he really used his fame in this kind of a way to affect change. And so that's how the relationship began to grow. So I wrote a chapter on him in the book, and now I am writing with him his biography that will be out next year.
Well, look at that. You guys heard it here first, because I'm pretty sure I didn't know that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I mean, you know, we talk on a fairly frequent basis. It is very possible that you mentioned something, and I was like, oh. Well, thank Dr. Scott, awesome. Um, one of the, one of the things that's so inspiring about Lenny Wilkins is how casual, it almost seems like he's very casual about all the stuff that he did. But this idea of like doing the right thing, for some folks, can seem casual, but it's actually fairly calculated, right? Like when we were learning and unpacking in sessions that some folks may have been part of, this idea that like, oh, Rosa Parks, when they just decided to not stand up. But in actuality, it was like months of planning that had gone into it. And it wasn't just like a haphazard thing. Um, these moments that we see like, oh, you know, um, the Nashville All-Stars of John Lewis and Diane Nash and T.T. Vivian, those guys, they just happened to not get up from a lunch counter. Whoa, it was like, it was a bunch of planning that went into that. Um, so how do you, how do you, how do you see the way Lenny Wilkins kind of went about his activism? Because if he's explaining it to kids in class, where it's kind of just like, oh, you know, I decided to do this. It almost makes it seem like it was haphazard, but was it? Or was there like some kind of methodology and planning to it?
So I think the methodology and planning is, so here's this kid who, and one of the things I talk about in the chapter is the intersection of, 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 of the kind of parallel lives that the Supersonics led, that he led. Neither he nor the Supersonics were ever expected to amount to anything. And then here you have the Supersonics win the NBA championship, and Lenny Wilkins becomes this famed coach and player. So he grows up, this poor black kid in Bed-Stuy, and many people, with the exception of his family, thought he wasn't supposed to make it. He was 15 on his basketball team of 15 in high school. And he quit to get a job to help his mom after school instead, because his father had passed away, and she was a single mother raising several children. And so here is, is this man who is, um, beating the odds, who is up against so much, and yet he said from the beginning, and much of it had to do with the way that his mother kind of raised him up and his aunts, and even his father's impact that he had on him in a very early age. He says, I was not going to be disrespected ever by anyone. And he really brought that into his life, but he doesn't do it in this kind of, uh, in a way that is loud or any way that he needs to be. You can talk to old players, and they'll say, you know, he led like with a kind of quiet sternness. He led with a tenderness, but he was not to be crossed at the same time. And so that was on the field and off the field. He is an extremely humble man. He, it's very challenging to get him to tell you about his own accomplishments. Some of it you have to get from other people or know, and then he'll start to talk about it. But really, much of it has to do with who he is and how he was raised. And his mother is, uh, he talks about her in being one of the ones who really trained him like that. When they used to, his mother was Irish Catholic. And so when they were going to a store, and an Irish woman with her four little black children were going to this store, he said people would stare at them, and his mother would say, what the hell are you looking at? And so her reaction let him know, huh, I don't have to take anything from anyone. And because integrating that with who he is as a natural leader, that's how he was able to go about and maneuver much of what he did. He talks about, for instance, when he became part of the St. Louis Hawks before they moved to Atlanta, and how when he moved into an all white neighborhood, people who didn't want him there poisoned and killed their dog. And, but he didn't move. I mean, that was a devastating moment, but he wasn't going to allow that. He talks about how he went to a restaurant that was hanging his picture for advertising the St. Louis Hawks, but they didn't want him to be in there and eat. And he went in there and sat down and ate and said, they better not try to refuse me service. And so he always just made sure to push the boundaries in a way where he commanded respect for himself. And he, and what he wants in the biography is for that to come through. He said, I want young people to know through my life that they don't have to accept that kind of disrespect and that they can make it through anything.
Just let that think in for a hot second. Um, sorry, I keep forgetting there's like other people here. Um, so, uh, one, a conversation that we actually were just having right before this started was about, was around Jackie Robinson. Um, and I, uh, I'm, I kind of think it was you, but also, I don't know. But usually when there's something that has to do with history in my head, I just kind of attribute it to you. But, um, I remember, of course, of course. Um, we can, we can have a blooper situation later. Um, but there seems to be, uh, I remember hearing that Jackie Robinson didn't break the color barrier, but he was let in. He was allowed to step over this kind of invisible line. And you and I were having a conversation about how, um, you know, Jackie Robinson wasn't actually like the best black player, but he was the right person at the right time, with maybe like the right temperament. So can we have a conversation about how to kind of reframe some of these, um, kind of sports moments where you're like, oh, well, this person was the first? Because Jackie Robinson, he demands a lot of respect these days, right? Like, you know, 42 is the only number that's retired all across baseball. And there's like all these kind of big things that happen with, with Jackie Robinson. But, yeah, like, there's also, like, why, why him?
Right. So why him? So that's a really good question. And, and so let me just understand what, so we want to talk about why him? And then what's the second part of that, kind of how do we think about?
How do we, yeah, how do we think about reframing? Because you mentioned, right, that's like the, there was the Negro League that was full of a lot of really black players. But we don't ever, we don't have major conversations about the Negro League. We only talk about these like black players who happen to then come into these white spaces and desegregate, um, these white spaces.
Right. And I think a number of people didn't even realize, unless they lived in that particular historical moment, that the Negro Leagues were a thing until maybe about 25 years ago, when the apparel came back on the scene. And it became cool to wear Negro League hats and Negro League shirts. And so now we begin to see that a bit more. And so now we begin to see that a bit more, and many people who are, uh, maybe baseball connoisseurs or connoisseurs of this kind of, of, of edgy clothing, begin to know more about the Negro Leagues because of that. Jackie Robinson, and I would argue, probably would acknowledge that himself, but a number of his players around him, and they never said that to admonish him, would say he wasn't the best player. And, and I think he recognized that as well. He played, uh, in the Negro Leagues after he left UCLA, where he was a four-star athlete. He played basketball, football, baseball and ran track. A lot of people don't realize that. And interestingly, two of his teammates at UCLA, um, Kenny Washington and Willie Strode were the first two to reintegrate the NFL one year before Jackie Robinson integrated the MLB. When they joined Los Angeles Rams, the first time the Rams moved to Los Angeles. So UCLA has this kind of storied history of the reintegration of different sports. He wasn't the best, but he was the right man at that time. So what does that mean? It's the same, and I always equate it to this. Was Rosa Parks the first person not to give up her seat on the bus? Not, no, I mean, people have been doing this for a hundred years previous to that. There's a woman in New York who did it in eighteen fifty-four, uh, one hundred years before her. She wasn't even the first person that year. It does not take away from the courage and what she did at all. But there was a young girl that some of you may be aware of, Claudette Colvin, who also did not give up her seat on the bus, fifteen years old, several months before Ms. Rosa Parks. But they didn't use her as the face of the movement. Why didn't they use her as the face of the movement? Because she had gotten pregnant at a very young age. They, she came from a working-class family. That has nothing to do with the level of disrespect that was heaped upon her by having to sit in a segregated space on a bus. But it could have been used to somehow detract from the narrative and demonize her character. And so Rosa Parks, as Dr. King said, was the right woman at the right time. Jackie Robinson, I call that the Rosa Parks Syndrome. Jackie Robinson was the right one at the right time. Why? Satchel Paige was much better than him. Satchel Paige liked to call people, he was a pitcher. He would call the outfielders off the field and just be there with the catcher, because he knew he was that good. And he was a showman and he would throw it, but the MLB, they didn't do that. They didn't want that. So Satchel Paige was not going to be the first one. Jackie Robinson, just like Branch Rickey, was a Methodist, which Ricky thought was absolutely fantastic. He was an army man. He was a family man. And he said to him though, because Jackie was not one to be crossed, there are many stories about him, um, what, uh, fighting against racial injustice. At one point, he was sitting on a bus, uh, when he was in uniform on a base, and he nearly got court-martialed because of the way he reacted when they told him to give up his seat and get out of the quote-unquote colored portion. So Branch Rickey said, but look, I need you to not fight back. Because if you fight back, what happens? Then everybody says, oh, it wasn't just Jackie Robinson. He represents the entire race. We can't have anybody. And so he was able to do that. And in that way, when we talk about forms of activism, that is a pure form of activism. His ability to restrain, to do exceptionally well, to become the Rookie of the Year and not fight back against circumstances that I'm sure I would have fought back against, allowed him to continue to pave a path for others. So he's the right person at this right particular time.
I don't know how I feel about that.
You don't know?
I get it. I understand.
Right.
Um, because I mean, at the end of the day, the movement, the movement is dependent sometimes on people understanding it enough to be like, okay, let me, let me join and be part of this. Because if it's, if it's too far away from something that you are either able to understand or able to like, I don't know if tolerated is the right word, but able to interact with, then it almost becomes, it almost becomes too much. And also like allies could just turn it off, right? For black and brown people, it was more than just Jackie Robinson breaking the color line. But there's this idea, it's also like the standards that Obama was held to, right? Like there was, there's no possible way Obama could have been anything other than perfect um, in the eight years that he was in presidency. But that leniency is not given to, you know, black people the same way it's given to, to white folks.
One hundred percent. I mean, they, they talked about Obama because he wore a tan suit once.
Well, hey, but he looked bad.
What's happened over the last four years? So you're right. It's an impossible standard. Say, let's call it what it is. It is a racist standard. So the standard that Jackie had to live up to was in fact a racist standard. So we can couch it i- in that, and he understood that. There's another side to that. For instance, when I talk to Lenny Wilkins and I talk to any, I've interviewed a number of people of that, uh, whether it was for sports or, or public history projects that I'm doing. I can't tell you how many times Jackie Robinson comes up for young, uh, for African-American men and women when they talk about the kind of hero status that he had. So we also have to understand him in that way as having inspired, and, and Wilkins talks about this because his father died when he was five. He said Jackie became this symbol of, of, of a man, of what he should be as a man for him. So there's also that representation of what he was. And Jackie understood that. In his autobiography, he talks about how when he would interact with young African-American children, how important he was to that. And so in some ways, that carried him through some of the other horrific things that he had to deal with.
So because this is a space in which we talk about duality, I would like to pivot to Mr. Jack Johnson. Um, if we are, if we are able to. Um, Teresa, I see your question. I'll, I'll get to it after this. So, um, you, you and I have had just light conversations about Jack Johnson, so I'm kind of excited to get into it. Um, so, uh, in one of the articles that was on the, uh, ev- events page, um, there's a CNN article on Jack Johnson. And Jack Johnson was, uh, the first black man to win the heavyweight title in boxing. And, uh, he fought a man named James J. Jeffries, who came out of retirement to, uh, as Jeffrey said, um, I am going into this fight with the sole purpose of proving that a white man is better than an Negro. And the article continues to say that two weeks after the fight, um, the former, uh, US President Theodore Roosevelt, who himself was a boxing fan, wrote an op-ed in which he supported the banning of moving pictures of the boxing matches, hoping that the Johnson-Jeffries bout was the last, uh, prize fight to take place in the United States. And it wasn't just US officials. Um, officials in the British Empire were also made to prohibit the circulation of the film, um, because they were quote-unquote terrified of what this film would do to the delicate balance of power. And these spaces were, in particularly the British case, often were outnumbered by, um, people of African descent. So my first question, um, well, the, the fight that, uh, Jack Johnson, in which he beat, uh, Jeffrey, sparked racial, uh, riots, sparked riots and massacres kind of all over. Why is Jack Johnson such a polarizing, uh, figure? Because he was, if I remember correctly, Senator McCain, before his death, was actually trying to get him, um, I don't even, I can't say this word, Pama Posthumously. That word. Um, you know, I can speak three languages, but this word takes me down.
And I cannot speak three languages, so I mean.
Well, you know, I, I have languages for when I can't say a word. These are the kind of, go there. Senator McCain kind of started championing, um, this. And, uh, Obama actually didn't, didn't award, uh, Mr. Jack Johnson with this, uh, the P-word. Um, but it was actually, uh, forty-five who did it in twenty eighteen. I know, I know, I know. It just burns and grits, burns and grits to think about it. Um, but first, basically, first question is, why is it important for us to know the story of Jack Johnson?
Right.
And the second question is, why is it that Jack Johnson's kind of personality, his boisterous nature and his, uh, kind of love of flaunting white women, um, around? Like, why is that also important for us to understand? But because, I mean, aside of the fact that it runs people the wrong way.
So let me tell you, so Jack Johnson is, we can talk about him forever, so I, I'll take up the whole time. But what, but let me give you a little background. So here's a man who is the, the son of former slaves. He was born in eighteen seventy-eight in Galveston, Texas. And he grew up in something, uh, fighting first in something called Battle Royale. If any of you have seen, um, and I forget the name of the film, but it's the bi, it's the, the film with, uh, Chadwick about James Brown. And they have a scene where white men, usually very upwardly mobile white men, would take black boys off the street, blindfold them, have them fight each other bare-fisted, and then pay bet against the winner. That's a real thing. And Jack Johnson actually also was a part of that, as was James Brown. And so that's where he started to fight. Now, he becomes a boxer in a time, and we have to understand this, at the time, sports were completely segregated, right? There was very little kind of, uh, um, interaction across racial boundaries for sports. So he's boxing at a time when, when boxing, when a white fighter would fight a black fighter, and this was illegal in many states, it wasn't a contest between those two fighters. It became a contest between black and white. And the winner, that race, became the victor, not that individual. And so nobody would fight Jack Johnson. His first big bout, he broke the rule in Texas, and he and the white fighter went to jail for one month. And then he leaves and he goes to Chicago. The fighter who was the champion at the time, Tommy Burns, refused to fight him. So Jack Johnson in nineteen oh eight follows Tommy Burns to Australia, fights all around Australia, while Burns, while Burns is fighting there, gets a lot of press and shames Burns into having to fight him, because it became ridiculous and that he kept dodging away from this fighter. So Jack Johnson beats him, becomes a heavyweight champion, and the world falls apart. He comes back to the US and all of these, including Jack London and famous, famous writers, start calling for Jim Jeffries, who had retired a champion, as champion, to come back and fight him. Their argument was, Jeffries, you never actually lost to anyone, so technically you're still the champion. And so they said, okay, the fight was set for California. Progressives said, no, we hate boxing. They said, fine, we'll leave. We'll go to Reno, Nevada. They fought on July fourth, Fourth of July, nineteen ten, in front of twenty-five thousand people. And so as they're fighting, people around the country are waiting to see what's going to happen. And the way they depicted Johnson in the press during this time, they made him into a Sambo. There were cartoons that were denigrating his intelligence. This is a man who held a patent for a wrench that he made. He was an extremely intelligent man. But they wanted to push him down. Why? Because Jack Johnson, A, was, was going to be, if he won, it seemed like a victory for black folks. So black folks were rooting for him, and it would dismantle this idea of white supremacy. But B, because as you were alluding to, he was not one to be put in his quote-unquote place. How was he not one to be put in his place? He dated white women. He wore, he, he wore his money on himself with his fur coats and his fancy cars. There's this wonderful story that one of his biographers tells, where he's speeding down the road in his car, which in the early nineteen teens was probably like twenty-two miles an hour. He's speeding down the road in his car. The police stop him. The policeman says, if you give me fifty dollars, then I won't take you to jail. So Jack gives him a hundred. He said, well, why you give me a hundred? He said, because I plan to come back through this way. So now you got your money. So this is the personality of Jack Johnson. When he won, he would flaunt his wins, and it, it just rubbed on the nerves of races at the time. And so he beats Jim Jeffries. Jim Jeffries comes out of retirement. He loses like a hundred pounds. They called him openly the Great White Hope. They said, knock the, the gold teeth out of Je- Jeff Johnson's mouth. And as soon as he wins, riots break out across the country. Now, this is where it becomes kind of less fun and victorious. Black people were murdered across the country by white mobs who attacked them because of this win. There were anti-masogination laws presented in some states as a result of Jack Johnson's win. States banned the showing of the film because of the kinds of reactions that people were beginning to have across the country. So it shows that sports have never just been about entertainment. Sports have always been a reflection of social and political things going on in society. And we very much see that these last several months.
Look, now I'm about, I'm about to go read up a little more on Jack Johnson. Um,
We should talk about the white slaves in jail, though, right?
Right, right, right. So, uh, the Mann Act basically was, um, a law, uh, that said that you can't transport, if I understand correctly, white women across state lines? So can, can you give us, uh, kind of the scenario that caused, uh, Jack Johnson to be jailed? Around nineteen thirteen, I think.
Yeah, it was. So the Mann Act was exactly that. It was called the White Slave React. And so it said you can't transport white women across state lines with the purpose of essentially engaging in sex with, sex with them. And so at first, he had married this woman who they tried to say, well, you did this with her, but she admitted that she had previously been a prostitute. And so that whole argument fell apart. But then a scorned lover of his came forward, who said, well, he forced me across these state lines, even though he hadn't, they were together and it was consensual. And he was sentenced to three hundred and sixty-six days in jail and a fine. He was sentenced by a guy, and this is fantastically sad. He was sentenced by a guy called Judge Kennesaw Mountain Landis. Kennesaw Mountain Landis became the first baseball commissioner as well. And he was the one who was vehemently opposed to the integration, or at least one of them, to the integration of MLB. When he died and Happy Chandler became the, the baseball commissioner, then he with Branch Rickey would be able to pave a way for MLB to be integrated. So he put him in jail for that year because this was a way to stop his fame. This was a way to put a man in his place who had spent his entire life pushing so that he wouldn't be put in his place. And then Joe, Joe Louis becomes the next champion.
Right.
So talk about activism. In many ways, his push to not be told who he was supposed to be as a black man, to me, was a form of activism. It was an example.
So it's interesting you say that, because Jack Johnson wasn't exactly loved by a bunch of his fellow boxers. If I remember correctly, he was betting against some of his, uh, fellow black boxers. Um, so then what is, what does it mean when you being your most authentic self? Because I just, I, I don't see Jack Johnson being a jerk just for the sake of being a jerk. But there's this idea that, you know, he did cause some friction between, you know, other black folks because of the way he was kind of flaunting himself. And it reminds me on like a really high level of like a Dubois, uh, you know, the Booker T. Washington kind of situation, where there's like these two ways of going about things. Um, but can you, can you talk a little bit about why, uh, some black folks just were not down for Jack Johnson being Jack Johnson?
Right. I, and I would argue that more people were down for him than weren't, because that night when they had that, uh, this fight of the century, as they called it in nineteen ten, there were black folks around the country listening, waiting, waiting for the telegram to come through to tell them what happened. There were a number of people who were not happy because they felt like he was kind of reversing their cause. Uh, you're, you're exactly right to, to frame it as this kind of Booker T. Washington, Dubois kind of juxtaposition, that if you act like this, you're making things harder for us. Also, some people in the black press would, uh, would, would, would chastise him for dating white women. And so he was getting it from both sides for the people who he dated. So that was a large part of it as well. As far as other boxers, so when you get the new champion, Joe Louis, who becomes champion in nineteen thirty-six after he beats James Braddock, they wanted Jackson or Johnson, his, I'm sorry, Joe Louis, his handlers wanted him to be nothing like Jack Johnson. The other reason why Jack Johnson was often admonished is because he made sure that all of his chauffeurs, his cooks, his men, everyone was white. And black folks would say, well, hey, black people can have those jobs. But what he was doing was saying, I'm going to flip it, and I'm going to live in a different world than what I typically see. So there are two sides to that kind of existence.
Um, that reminds me specifically of the scene in Forrest Gump, where Bubble Gump's mom, uh, gets all the money. And then, um, instead of her cooking and cleaning, she has this white lady bringing a bowl of gumbo to her. She would taste it. She's like, that'll do. Yeah, it just immediately went to, it immediately went to, um, I mean, or for, you know, some of the younger folks in this space, if you watch Beyonce's Black as King, there's a scene in there with her and Jay-Z, where she's being waited on by like black chauffe, or white chauffeurs and such like that. So I think there is definitely this idea that like, if black folk could flip the script in that, in those days, or even now, you know, you would want white people kind of waiting on you hand and foot, because that's been the narrative for, you know, for centuries. But this idea of like, what does it mean to, right, right, right. This idea of like, what does it mean to be, um, put in these positions where your identity and the way that you carry yourself speaks largely, like speaks not just for you as a person, but speaks for like a whole community, which kind of makes me want to now kind of move into a more, uh, uh, present space. But let me, let me look at questions real quick. So, um, Teresa asked, um, so was Colin Kaepernick taking a knee too early in the timeline? Um, that is, when is, uh, that is, is the right time now?
So you know what? It depends. I think if you ask him, he'd probably say, no, I was just on time. But it just, society to catch up to him. So for instance, when Muhammad Ali decided he was not going to be inducted into the army and go to Vietnam, people, I mean, he was arrested, he had to face trial. This was when the war was still not wholly popular, but not as unpopular as it would become after the Tet Offensive in nineteen sixty-eight. He does this in sixty-six. But by nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-nine, more people are saying, oh, yeah, you're right. Maybe we shouldn't be in Vietnam. Same thing with Colin Kaepernick. There's a historical parallel there. So when he takes a knee, many people were not ready to recognize and understand, oh, he's taking a knee because of much of the brutality that is heaped upon African-Americans, particularly police brutality in the country. But now that we begin to see much of this over the last many, many months with George Floyd, with Elijah, um, McLean, when we start to see that with Breonna Taylor, we say, oh, okay, so that's what he means. So now you have the commissioner of the NFL, Roger Goodell, who was so fast to try to kind of blackball Kaepernick, actually apologizing this year and saying, I was wrong. So I would not argue he was too early. I think it needed to happen so that people can reflect upon that and say, wow, we should have had more of an open mind and understood more what Kaepernick was trying to say. Now we really get it. Now other- Now others who have come into the fold of what he is doing have been able to fundamentally shift the way that organizations like the NFL and the NBA do business. It's phenomenal what we're witnessing today.
Um, can you expand a little bit on that of how they've been able to create change?
Absolutely. So for instance, a number of the NBA coliseums are now opening up their spaces for voting polls because of the push by those players to make them do that. Now, when you watch the NBA games or the NFL games or WNBA, women in the WNBA have really been at the forefront of doing much of this, then you see that everyone, regardless of color or status on the team, is wearing something that reflects an understanding of racial justice. Um, the NFL has created an organization where they are putting money toward prison reform. These things didn't happen several years ago. These are because players got together, and I'll end up, mind you, largely African-American players, but players across racial boundaries. When you look at the NBA or, and when you look at, uh, the WNBA, you have players from different races who are coming together for a single cause of human justice. Racial justice with an understanding that if you're not free, I'm not free. And so that has been a beautiful sight to see as well. But they are forcing these organizations to function in a different way than they had previously functioned.
Word defending Lou Hamer and Miss Ella Baker. Um, one more question. Can Dr. Scott speak to the WNBA's role in social justice as a whole team more so than individuals as compared to the men's sport?
So I think that, that both have done quite a job. And I think that all of them, with the WNBA, the NBA, the NFL, the MLB, uh, women's soccer, whatever it is, they're all standing on the shoulders of these giants, both men and women, from Wilma Rudolph to, uh, Ora Washington, to Bill Russell and the gentlemen who were part of, you know, Tommy, Tommy, uh, Smith and, and Giancarlo's. They're standing on the shoulders of these giants who are both men and women. And so I think one of the things that we can say with what the WNBA has been doing, and they've been very visible in some of the things they're doing and pushing for prison reform, in pushing for people to really acknowledge some of the racial disparities in our society, is that they are broadening our, um, notion of understanding that those ath- those athletes who get involved in activism are not just men. And so I don't want to say, oh, one is doing more than the other, because I don't think that that's a fair comparison. But what I will say is that what the women have done is to make us, force us to kind of reestablish paradigm of activism and athlete, of the activist athlete, and to think about what that means. And I hope what they push us all to do is to reach back into the past also and see other examples of people who look like them and what they're doing, other women who have done the same.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Nancy mentioned that, uh, it's frustrating that women get overlooked again. Uh, that is, that is kind of life. That's history, right? Um, in a conversation I was able to have with the esteemed, uh, Reverend James Lawson, he mentioned that, uh, I know, this is a fact that I can say that, it's like bananas in pajamas, uh, first of all. But, um, he had mentioned that part of the reason why the boycotts worked, the Montgomery Bus Boycott worked, is because when all the men got together in a room to try and figure out planning, they didn't really understand what the discrimination was when they went downtown to the stores and to the shops and stuff. Because they weren't the ones who were actually engaging and interacting in that space. It was the women. And so Reverend Lawson decided that he was going to go have a conversation with the women who actually have to go downtown to do the shopping, um, to get the clothes for the kids for school and all that. And he's like, okay, what are you all dealing with? How do we go about this? Because you are all the ones who are the workforce in a way that are using the buses more than other folks. So I think this idea of women being in spaces where they've been leading the charge, but are not then given the credit, right? Cause if you were to look up the Montgomery Bus Boycott right now, MLK's name is gonna come up at the top. And it's like, hmm, nah.
Or can organize.
Yeah, yeah. Like where, where is, why are we not learning about Joanne Robinson? Even when we talk about Nashville, why aren't we not talking about Diane Nash? You know, there's a lady named Annie Avery Pearl who we met. It was like, who was like, I understand y'all do that non-violent things, but like, I'm gonna keep a gun off you. Right? Like, why aren't we talking about people, you know, like this, right? And so I think it's very key for us to understand that women have always been a part of this. But also because of the way the stories and the narratives are shaped, we have to do additional work to try and find out who the women were that were in these spaces. And I think that's, that's kind of where, um, a little extra elbow grease is needed. And also part of the reason why I wanted to create a space like this where Dr. Scott can come and talk, because a lot of times when you're also thinking about historians, the male historian, it's like, hmm, don't blame me. There's a bunch of like black women out there who are doing big things. And so, um, again, a whole historian, bachelor's, master's, PhD. Like this is not, this is not a Eurostep historian. This is, this is the whole, the whole, the Lakers of historians. Um, so interesting that we're talking about, uh, kind of what it means to be, um, an athlete and also an activist. Um, I, I don't know if folks remember, but Laura Ingraham responded to LeBron James one time with shut up and dribble, right? She can kick rocks barefoot. Um, and it made me think about the, huh, I mean, in the best possible way. I mean, I'm not gonna wish death upon her because I feel like too much on my spirit, but like if you step your toe. Yeah, like if you step your toe, I'm kind of, I'm okay with that. That's about the most evil I can handle on my, on my spirit. Um, but she, uh, it made me think about how the vast number of athletes in both football, you know, the NBA, uh, now, I think last week, the NF, the, uh, NHL had a draft and there was a black kid who was drafted as the highest, um, pick in the draft for a black kid. So it's like, we're, we're everywhere. Also, hockey, well, it was started by black people, um, in Canada. Yeah, I might wanna look into that. Exactly. So there's this idea that like a sport could be created, um, and then it is saturated with like white faces. But if we don't actually look at the origin stories, this is something I preach a lot. Um, as a comic book lover, origin stories are really important in us understanding the character, right? And that same kind of idea is what I use whenever I'm trying to figure out something around history, right? Trying to figure out where the origin of this thing is will give you a lot of information and also lay down a path for you to figure out how we got to this point in the first place, right? So I definitely, uh, recommend you guys looking into the history of, um, hockey. But, um, with the vast number of athletes in football and basketball being black, um, you know, and when they're winning championships, everything is all good, like we're happy or whatever. But then when we start talking about the freedoms that, you know, we want, um, our communities to have, because there's this idea, it's like, well, you make a bunch of money, like you're an athlete, you're rich, problems don't affect you. But that's not true, right? There was this, uh, story a couple of years ago that Tyler Perry was pulled over by a police officer and, you know, he was put in handcuffs. And this is like Tyler, we're talking about Tyler Perry, one of the most famous black directors, producers, who just opened up like a three-hundred acre lot studio that was formerly Confederate land, you know. So we're not talking about somebody who's just like an everyday person, but also, you know, I think LeBron James's house at one point was vandalized. We have to remember that it doesn't matter how rich and how great you are. At the end of the day, these folks are still gonna see the black first, which is basically what it felt like Laura Ingraham, um, you know, was trying to say. So in your article that you wrote for Truthout, which we did have, I hope folks got an opportunity to read that, um, you talked about this thing called the triple, um, consciousness, which is a kind of playoff of WB DuBois', um, double consciousness. So can you, can you break that, can you break that down a little bit?
Absolutely. And I'll say two things about that. First, when you're talking about, so I'll talk about the triple consciousness that, that, that I talked about. But also something about the intercommunal, the, the intercommunal workings of sports teams. Because as you are saying, when, when African-American athletes, um, whether they, when they become very rich, they are still African-American. And many of them have been subject to different racism in society because of the color of their skin. But there's something that, when you've asked me in the past, like, why do I love sports, that before I get into that, that I thought about, that I wanna say, is that there's something about sports teams, though, that in and of themselves become these great spaces of sho- social and racial advancement within the context of a team. Now, why do I say that? Whether it's a team I was on, my husband talks about this, my brother talks about this, I, I, I interview people who talk about this. People come together, teammates, and barriers of social class, of race, of ethnicity, of religion are often dismantled. Because what happens? You guys are fighting together, you're sweating together, you're seeing the true character. And so there is so much racial progress and unity that happens within the context of a team that it's amazing to me. It's beautiful. And so many people talk about that and talk about how that has, has worked. There's a great movie many of you probably have seen called Glory Road that was done about the nineteen sixty-six, uh, which is now UTEP, Texas Western Championship. And if you watch the very end, all these kids came from different places in the country. You had, uh, Latino, black, and white who did not get along at first, but they became not just teammates, they became lifelong friends. That's also the power of sports. And that part of the power of sports is absolutely incredible. But then sometimes you have this exterior world that doesn't function in the same kind of communal way that function, that the team itself functions in. So we saw that, for instance, in the season opener in Kansas City, when the players across racial boundaries joined arms and the fans booed. And J.J. Watt said publicly later, I don't, I don't even get this. We weren't kneeling, we were just locking arms in a show of unity. Because some people didn't want to see that. They wanted them simply, they saw it as, as, I don't know what they saw it as. I can't even get in the mind of who said that. So what do I mean by this triple consciousness? Dr. DuBois, who was one of the co-founders of the NAACP, first African-American man to get a PhD from Harvard, was very much an anti-lynching advocate and a civil rights activist for centuries, a writer, a philosopher, a professor, an incredible person. He had a theory called the double consciousness. And he writes about it first in an eighteen ninety-seven, uh, article in the newspaper, and then he talks about it in his book, Souls of Black Folks in nineteen oh-one. And he says, African-Americans are essentially burdened by a dual consciousness. They are American and they wanna have all the things of what it means to be an American, to be a part of a democracy, to have all of the rights that they have. But they are also quote-unquote negro. And he says, what does it mean to be negro? Then you're living in a Jim Crow system at this particular time. And so how do you merge these two consciousnesses? And he says that people chose two paths. He said, some people chose the path of nihilism, where they internalize this sense that they were less than because they were American, but they couldn't buy into American democracy because they were black and they were oppressed. And he says, not me, I chose this path, where I was going to be the best in everything I could be and beat everyone and reconcile these two identities. And so what I did with the triple consciousness was a play on that. I added a third consciousness, the consciousness of celebrity from being an athlete and a lionized existence. And so Jim Brown, who was this wonderful, uh, um, running back for Kansas City Chiefs, said, eighty-one thousand people cheer for me on Sunday and on Monday I can't even go to a restaurant in my own town. So how do you reconcile those three consciousnesses? Being American, being black, and having this celebrity, celebrity identity. And so I go on to talk some about how some people kind of reconciled those three ideas. Wilma Rudolph, who was the first African-American woman to, first woman to win three gold medals in track. She won them in, uh, nineteen, oh gosh, sixty-four. So when she comes back to town in Clarksville, uh, Virginia, or Clarksville, Tennessee, they wanted to give her a parade that was going to be segregated because they're proud. She had gained international fame. And she used and, and kind of reconciled these, these three identities and said, no, if I participate in this parade, it's going to be integrated. And it was. And it was the first integrated parade in the city. And, and so she used, she, she reconciled these three consciousnesses and she used her celebrity in this kind of form of activism. So that's where I am with that. So we think about, so now I want people to think about, as you very poignantly mentioned, these are, uh, the obstacles. These are the barriers that a lot of black athletes face and that they talk about. And so how do they work to kind of reconcile that? Well, you know what LeBron James did? He created a documentary called Shut Up and Dribble. He re-appropriated it.
Yes, I definitely recommend you all, uh, looking into Shut Up and Dribble. It's pretty brilliant for him to have taken that and was like, I'll make some money off of that. And now I, I own it. Um, and LeBron James has, uh, an organization called More Than a Vote, which is, um, under the umbrella of something called Undefeated, which he started with one of his childhood friends, Maverick Carter. Um, and I think to date, he has now hired forty thousand poll workers. Um, and so there's this, go ahead.
Can we pause here so that you can talk about some of the work related to that, that you do? Please.
That was slick. Um, well, yeah, sure. Um, also, uh, Charles Douglas is also on this call. So Charles, uh, this is, this is, uh, the part where you come in and be yourself. Um, so for those of you who don't know, I work for an organization called Common Power. And essentially, Common Power wants to create opportunities for people to be able to have fair access to the ballot, whether it's you registering to vote, getting information you need to, on how to vote, all of that. And we don't just work in the state of Washington, because here in the state of Washington, obviously, we're lucky enough to have mail-in ballots, which we did have, I hope you all voted. I did yesterday. So we gotta, we gotta, we gotta do things. Um, it's not just about a presidential election, but it's about our local communities as well. So, um, basically what CP does is we work with other local organizations in states across the country to help amplify the work that they are already doing. An unofficial, um, slogan that was given to us by one of our volunteers was our boots, your ground. And so it's not about bringing in this kind of Seattle elitism that we sometimes tend to have around voting or anything like that. It's about taking off our CP shirts and putting on the shirt of the organization that we are working with. Because at the end of the day, we leave. This is all pre-COVID. We would travel down, um, to those cities, but then we would leave. And so if you create a bunch of like discord in a community that then you leave, um, that's not leaving them in a position that was better, that's actually like messing stuff up for them. The community organizers fully understand what their community needs and they sometimes just need the opportunity to amplify their work um, with a bunch of, kind of like a boost of volunteers. So now during COVID times, we still do a lot of work with, um, with partner orgs across the country. We're just doing it, obviously, um, remotely. Because at the end of, look, this is a historical election. Whether we wanna be in it or not, um, this is, this is, this is it. Like, we are in a census year. Also, we've got somebody who can't seem to say the name of states correctly as our president. And you know, at the end of the day, Joe Biden is not necessarily my first choice. I just feel like the rest of the world is looking at us like, these are the two people that y'all decided to, like, have run up at you with? Okay, sure, maybe there weren't enough people who signed up to do this job. But needless to say, at the end of the day, one thing that I've told, uh, white folks that maybe is, uh, comes as a surprise to you, a lot of times, black people during political elections, you have to vote for the lesser of two evils. Right? Even in an Obama administration, we, I think a lot of black folks had a lot of hope for Obama to do a lot of CP changes, but he's still working in a system that doesn't fully understand the plight and the racial strikes that black people and brown people go through. So at the end of the day, black and brown people have always had to vote for who is going to hurt us the least. And that is a situation now in the United States that we are in on a grander scale of us having to choose people who are going to hurt us the least. And so in these different states that we work in, we are helping them amplify people who are going to create safe spaces for their communities. Because at this point in Seattle, we are a little less in, well, our situation is a little less shitty. Put it that way. But that essentially is CP. If folks have questions, please check out commonpower.org. Also, um, please check out Dr. Scott's book, which is also on the CP website. Um, and I believe somebody put a link to it in, uh, in the chat, uh, Janet did. So thank you for that. But now that we have, we have done the housekeeping portion of this, um, one of the questions, that one of the last questions I have, and again, if folks have questions to ask Dr. Scott, please feel free to put them in the question. There is no such thing as a silly question. Um, this is a safe space for you to ask whatever it is that you, you would like to know. Um, basically, I, I had this, I had this question. I don't know if it's a fully fleshed out question, but I just wanted to see how, how you, I'm just gonna talk to that people, see how you swing at it. Um, is there, do you feel like there's a correlation between the commodification of black bodies in sports, enslavement and activism? Cause I think there's this idea that, um, during the days of enslavement, like à la Kanye West and his stupidity, there's this idea that like black folks were passive, right? And it doesn't have to be these like grand escapes, right? I'm not talking about like Nat Turner's revolt or, you know, or anything like that. But there, at every single day, black people were rebelling against the institution of enslavement. So could, could there be a correlation between the commodification of black bodies, sports, and, and like activism in a full way?
Wow, I mean, that's a great question. I think that there, and I'm gonna ask you to help me kind of talk about that. That there are kind of a lot of waves to that. So if we think about first, the idea of the commodification of black bodies, I mean, that's what enslavement was. It was the use of a black body for free labor. And so post-emancipation society, you continue to have that with compaclisen. If you don't know what compaclisen is, please look it up. But when it came to, uh, something like sports, um, you still see in some ways this commodification of the black body. And we talk about Jack Johnson's, uh, fight in that that was kind of what the body, they, people didn't wanna fight him because of the racial kind of issues and contests at the time. But then he became a body, a body that was consumed for a particular notion. And when he stepped outside of its boundaries, then there is this kind of backlash. And so in terms of when you're talking about rebellion or resistance, that we see resistance from very, very early on, that Rosa Parks is not this first kind of moment of resistance. We see it throughout enslavement. Then you continue to see resistance from people in different ways. So when we have the, within the context of a Jim Crow system then, when sports were segregated, resistance, as I kind of previously started to touch on, came in the form of what I call the politics of necessity. You don't wanna let me play in the USATF, uh, or the, uh, U, uh, United States Lawn and Tennis Association? Then I'll just create the ATA, which still exists today, which was an African-American tennis organization. I can't play in, in MLB, then I'll create the Negro Leagues. And by the way, there were many, many, many Negro Leagues. So when they say that this year is the hundred year anniversary, that was a Rue Fosters Negro League. There were many other Negro Leagues previous to him and a few after him. I can't play in, and the NBA was actually integrated a year after it started. But I can't play in other leagues, then I'll create my own. So this is, sports have then been used as a form of resistance that it falls into. That it falls into what I like to use as a very broad definition of activism. As far as this continued use of the black body, I think that there are some people. And I I hope that there are fewer and fewer because people are becoming very awakened in this time with a lot of what we're beginning to see on TV. With uh being home with COVID, with seeing these things unravel. I I don't believe in coincidences. I think this is a reckoning. That we are coming to have to recognize this, that there will be fewer and fewer people who think about the black body simply as this form of entertainment. But those who say, you know, get your ass off your knee because you're disrespecting this, or don't do whatever. Then they are seeing a black body as entertainment. And and quite frankly, any color body who is kneeling then becomes a body. Where they say, you are to entertain me and not one to uh push against the boundaries of racial or social injustice. But indeed, it is an idea of saying, you're supposed to do this, you're not supposed to do that. And so rebelling against that takes a lot of courage and and it's incredible. You asked me early on, do I believe that? That that athletes in general are supposed to use their platform for social justice. I'm not gonna say they're supposed to. But it sure is really freaking nice when they are able to use that platform to advance change. And make fewer people think of the body as one for entertainment. Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, yes, all that. I I second and third all that. Um we have a question here from Marty. It says, uh where are there other spaces in society besides sports where um. That can have the team spirit which which overrides racial divide?
Sports are a huge one. But I know that there are other spaces. Sometimes college does that. Kids go to college and they start hanging out with other kids who are from different socioeconomic, racial, ethnic backgrounds. And they're like, oh. You know, my uncle was tripping when he said X Y Z about one. And this is different. And you go and you see these kids hanging out together from from different groups. So I think college sometimes do that. And sometimes the military, you know, the military was segregated until nineteen forty eight and had many issues with uh black folks in in Vietnam. Being disproportionately sent to the front lines, black folks, and then economically marginalized folks. But I think in recent decades, in many ways, um that those enlisted men. They form bonds, and I've seen it with my own brother-in-law and had different conversations with people about that. Where those also become spaces where people come together. Because you know what? It doesn't matter what color you are. We're gonna have to cover each other's butts. So those are differences, I think, where we really see people come together and learn about one another.
Yeah, yeah. Um okay, folks, we're gonna start winding, start winding down, because Dr. Scott. Um with all of her brilliance and all of her accolades, is also still a parent to a young person. Um and I'm not trying to get on the hardest bad side, because uh she. The hard, look, the hard going either, they're gonna save the world, or she's gonna burn it down. That's just the end of it. So um, let's see. Uh I'm disappointed in the Pac twelve reversing their decision about the football season. Can Dr. Scott also just say a little bit about Truthout?
Okay, two separate questions then. So. No, no, that's okay. Um yeah, so if you wanna get me started on that, as much as I adore sports and understand how useful they are. People understand particularly how useful they are for women. Women who are involved in sports have uh less likelihood of being in violent relationships. Less likelihood of having eating disorders, more likelihood of having higher grades. There are so many useful things to people who engage in sports. But I am a realist in this age of COVID. And can I just say, yes, it upsets me. That there are some conferences that are deciding to go ahead and have kids come back and play. My niece plays soccer at the University of Arizona for Pac twelve. She had left for many weeks because a number of the kids on the team tested positive. This was in the news, you guys probably saw it. But now they called them back to practice. And you know what the pressure is? Well, you don't have to come back. But you know what happens? You're gonna lose your starting position if you don't. And for a lot of the kids who, regardless of what those sports are. These scholarships are renewable by year. They used to be by semester. Now they're by year. So people, and you know, I hope somebody doesn't sue me. I'm not saying anyone's doing anything, but let's be realistic. I know often how Pat, how D one sports work. If you decide you're not going to come back. Well, we have found somebody to replace you and we don't need you. So it's really putting children, kids in this very precarious position. And I would prefer, for instance, my daughters are running track at NYU. Now, NYU is a division three school, and that's one of the reasons we wanted them to go to D three, so they didn't have to deal with some of the pressures of D one. And having their their lives tied to the, to the uh finances of D one. But they said, we're just gonna cancel it for the season. The Ivy League schools, a lot of them D one, we're just gonna cancel for the season. That would be my preference. Because otherwise, a lot of these students are put in a very bad position. And a number of football players, actually, you guys probably saw this from the Pac twelve conference, wrote a letter um pushing back against that. And saying, we don't wanna bring COVID to our families or to us. And we don't wanna have to be put in this position. So I I think it's a really unfortunate position that they're being put in. I recognize that it's because dollars are running the system and that to me is really tragic.
Yeah. Also, I just wanna acknowledge the humble brag that Dr. Scott's daughter's got into NYU. Look, just just slide that in there. You know, my, my daughter's got into NYU. Just slide that in there. You know, yeah, they run track, but also, you know, we are, we are student athletes here first, not athletes too. So I heard that. Um, look, as as of, I, look, I get down with one of Dr. Scott's daughter, Ani.
Yeah, they are, they are buddies.
Ani, Ani, I'm gonna be getting Ani into trouble. Into good trouble, but into trouble nonetheless. Jamu is good trouble, but also to remind Ani that her mom don't play. And so you may think that you're wrong, cause you go to college. There is something special about having a black mom, Boiler be telling you. Um so I have another question here from Elise. Um do you have a favorite Seattle sports activism story?
Oh my goodness. I don't know. I can't, there are so many great things that are coming out of Seattle sports. Uh you know, I I won't, I don't know if I'll say activism, but but maybe just a a good shout out to something you mentioned earlier, Garfield basketball. Some of those basketball for Rainier Beach. I mean, they have produced some really wonderful, not only student athletes. But as we know, Garfield, some activists, like the the Dixon Brothers and and others. So I would say that, you know, those would be some of my favorite stories. The people who are coming out of the high schools and going on to do great things in both athletics and in society.
Yeah, as a kid, you got to roam the hall with uh with one of the Dixon Brothers. The stories that I got to hear when I was. Suspiciously not in class, um were pretty, were pretty amazing. Yeah, nah, I just maybe took the long way to get back to class. And Mr. Dixon caught me in the hall and was like, let me tell you a story, young blood. And I should go, oh, well, I guess. Dixon wants to tell me his, wants to tell me a story. Also, when I was at Garfield, we had Joyce Walker at, I was not in the library, actually. I'm pretty sure I stepped foot twice at the library my entire four years at Garfield. Cause the library was where you kicked it and didn't actually do your work. Um but when I was at Garfield, I graduated in two thousand and six. Uh Joyce uh Walker was the coach of the girls' basketball team. And also Joyce Walker, I believe, was the second woman to try out for the Harlem Globetrotters. Um so we are talking about like a rich sports history in Seattle, right? Nate Robinson with uh Rainier Beach. Um you know, Will Conroy and all those guys who came out from Garfield. Um you know, and like Gary Payton is still around, Sean Kemp is still around. I'm pretty sure I see Marvina like all the time. Um you know, and then you bring in the uh the Seattle Storm. I've seen Sue Bird walking around, Cap Hill with like Megan Rapinoe. And you know, you just kinda leave them alone, because it's like, I get it, girl, you're just trying to go get coffee. Um in this street. But uh it's definitely um, sports in Seattle has definitely been part of my life in a way. I mean, okay, also BTW, Garfield's football team is horrible. I'm pretty sure my junior sophomore, my junior senior year, we won two games. And they were both against. It's like, it's like, you know, but we had a lot of school spirit at those games. We had a lot of school spirit at those games, even if we knew we weren't gonna win. But this idea of um sports being something that helps young black and brown people, um they did take it in twenty sixteen. Yeah, look, Garfield, Garfield is about this life. And it wasn't just the sports team, right? Like Garfield Jazz Band was also really um really awesome. We won um the uh. I forget what his name is called. Anyway, we won the jazz competition in New York, I think, with, it was like us and Roosevelt and one other school that was kind of, essentially Ellington. Janet, you know what? This is what it means to be a bulldog. You see this, people? This is what it means to be a bulldog. You got your facts right. Thank you, Janet. Um essentially, Ellington, we definitely have uh won many championships. And also Clarence Akok. Famous uh jazz musician was the uh head of the um, our jazz band. So. Basically, I wanna let you know that you should all send your children to Garfield. That's basically both of these conversations about sending your children to Garfield.
There's, and actually, one of the chapters in the book is written by a young man named Anthony Washington. And he played or basketball there. And he talks about all the names you just talked about and about high school basketball and how it turned out, all of these individuals. So it's the only chapter, personal recollection instead of kind of a historical thing. Absolutely.
See, look at, look at all the amazing things that could happen to your child if your child goes to Garfield. Be great. Um if uh if folks do not have any other questions, I'm gonna close, I'm gonna close this off with one last question for Dr. Scott. Um but if you still have questions, feel free to, feel free to drop them in. Um as we close off, Dr. Scott and I probably just gonna chill for a little bit as uh folks kind of filter out. Um you know, do a debrief real quick. But um basically, my last question for you is what are some thoughts, some lessons, some moments? That you would like to leave us with to ponder as we think about athletes and activism, especially within an election um where like. You know, the the women's basketball teams are wearing things that they vote, where they actively trying to vote out a, an owner of um of an NBA team. Um or you know, with LeBron James and his More Than a Vote initiative, um and pressuring uh you know, uh NBA stadiums to turn into polling locations. Um kind of what are, what are your final thoughts around around this topic? And also like, what do you, what do you got coming down the line next? Uh besides your autobiography that you're working with, with Mr. Wilkins? Cause I know you got a book coming out in the spring.
I do, yeah. So that, I'll, I'll, that's called Lynching and Leisure, the transforma, uh Race and the Transformation of Violence in uh. Of Mob Violence in Texas. I should know the title, but. That is coming out in the spring indeed. Yeah, so that's a kind of a a completely different history. But still integrates uh issues of race and leisure. So thank you for mentioning that. Um as far as what I want people to get from this, you know, when I started teaching the the sports class. What I decided to walk in there, and I learned this from a scholar who uh used to teach at Berkeley, who said. Instead of trying to hope that students get the lesson, sometimes you just have to say, you need to get this lesson. And when he says lesson, it doesn't mean knowing the dates and such. It's, hey, you know, look what Ora Washington, this famous tennis player, this female tennis player from the nineteen thirties. Or nineteen twenties, look what she was able to do and look at the challenges she faced. If she could face those challenges, then you can do anything. And so I often urge people to look at some of the the backstories. Of historical figures in sports and some of the ones today and say, and and draw energy from them. Draw inspiration from them. When you're feeling like life is challenging you, go to them and say, well, what did they, what did, what were they able to do? What did Bill Russell face and how did he come out of it? I have often done that. Use some of their stories to help guide you and inspire you. And even today, when you're talking about the WNBA, wearing, wearing the shirts and and other activists wearing the shirts. And going out and encouraging people to vote, they're not being silent. And so I think we have to take that from them too. We don't have to be silent. We are able to and can go out and say, this is how I feel and this is how I think we should be able to help individuals. And so I think taking the lessons from them, it takes a lot of courage. They're doing this in front of millions of people. Then we certainly can do this just within the context of our family or our neighborhood. They're having uncomfortable conversations on a national platform. We can have uncomfortable conversations with our neighbor or with our child. Inspiration. If they can do it like this, we cer- surely can do it in a, in a smaller circle. Or we can do it in our city or whatever else. But we can do it on a more diminutive level. That's what I want them to take.
Oh, look at that. Um there's one final question. So can we sign up for Dr. Scott's class via Zoom?
Hey, no, I could, I, that would be awesome. But I would, thank you for that. And if you mean it, then, which is sweet, I love the compliment. Then uh I can certainly provide AJ with, and she's great about uh telling others, the next time I'll be doing, I'll be doing a couple of lectures in the next couple of months. That are more kind of like a classroom standard lecture. So I love doing this format, though, when I get to talk to one of my favorite people about some of our favorite subjects. But thank you for asking.
One more question, could we donate to Truthout?
Please do. So if you go to truthout.org, they are a wonderful organization that really wants to highlight the voices of people. Who have things to say that sometimes aren't so popular, but other people need to hear. And they really kind of run on fumes. So if you can donate to Truthout, that would be really wonderful. And of course, to Common Power and the wonderful work that they're doing as well.
And also the Project Pilgrimage, because Project Pilgrimage is basically what got.
That's what brought us. Yeah, absolutely.
It is. And when I tell you I had questions with Dr. Scott every day, I was like, oh, you said this yesterday.
She would stung me sometimes, which I love.
It was like the next day, I got, I got the answer. Um thank you, folks, for joining us. Um appreciate the questions. Um I will definitely be working on a way to get Dr. Scott to do something specifically for CP in a classroom setting. But again, I have to remember that she's a full historian and uh you know, has a life outside of just having conversations with you on a daily basis. So we'll, we'll see how that works out.
To teach.
Look, we are, we are, we gonna figure it out. We are gonna figure it out. But um as always, as I'd like to tell folks, after these kinds of conversations, sometimes it's really heavy. And these can hit you a little later, so please take some time for yourself. Um if you get down with a vino, go have you a glass of wine. Um personally, I'm gonna watch Beyonce after this, but like however you guys choose to spend your time is your business. Um I personally would recommend Beyonce, but like, you know. Free will and all that. Um so if nobody has any more questions, uh feel free to filter out. Dr. Scott and I will be here for a couple more minutes having conversations.
Thank you, everybody so much.
Thanks for showing up to the last session of the year. Um we will be back next year with more conversations with Dr. Scott as her schedule allows us. To, to meet up, but good seeing all you folks. We'll talk to you guys later.
Bye.
Bye, folks.